Who's going to lead us in prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you now thanking you for another day and thank you for watching over us and caring for us. We ask that you be with us as we take on the business of this town. I pray that you'd guide us and direct us. I pray that you be with each citizen in it. I pray that you'd watch over them and continue to bless and care for them and help us to know each day, God, you're with us. Continue and be with us. I thank you for the many blessings of life and I thank you for all that you do. Go with us now as we go through this time and help us to be able to know that you're being, leading us through the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name.
All right. Want to say it's good to be in the meeting tonight. Last, a month ago, my blood pressure was 230 over 126 about 30 minutes before meeting. And I had to go and I want to thank everybody for their prayers and asking about me everywhere I see them when I go in town. So I want to thank everybody for that. So, all right. First thing we have on here is roll call from our mayor.
Town of Adalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for the Regular Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman, dated April 11th, 2023. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor of the Republican House, Head of Forums, President of County.
All right, thank you much. In front of you have our minutes from our previous meeting. Is there any questions, additions, deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
It's not so long.
Motion made by Alderwoman Denby. Do I hear second? Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We've come to public comments on our current agenda items. You know, this is something we put in that we will do each time. That's not to say that we won't take some questions maybe later on in the meeting, but this is a good time if you have something you want to talk about that's on the agenda, this would be where you do that. Does anyone have any comments of anything on the agenda? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to the first thing. We have a presentation of our financial statements for February 2023. Ms. Deborah Moe.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of February 28th, 2023, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the eight months ending February 28th, 2023, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and Alderman for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 8.8 million, included restricted funds of 5 million in the hydro fund and 1.9 million in the sales tax fund, investments of 9.7 million, which includes the hydro reserve fund of 2.3 million, 1.5 million in the general fund, 705,000 of ARPA funds, and the 5 million in the hydro funds invested in lamp. Total assets are 50 million. Total liabilities are 7.1 million. Fund balance, combined fund balance is 42.8 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the eight months ending February 28th, 2023 indicates combined revenues of 28.8 million, total expenditures of 33.7 million, for a change in net position of a negative 4.9 million. At the end of February, revenues and expenses should be at or around 67% of budget with 33% remaining. Overall, total revenues were at 56% of budget. Expenses were at 68% of budget. As approved by the board, the debts of the town were paid off in January in a total amount of 10.7 million. These debt payoffs are the reasons for the lower than expected net change in position. At this time, the budget has not been revised to reflect these board-approved changes. Revenues are lower than expected due to the lower hydro royalties caused by low levels of the Mississippi River, but are offset by the increase in sales tax revenue, which is at 78% of budget. Expenses are higher due somewhat by the cost of repairs to the conveyor belt at the port in the amount of 412,000. We have received 358,000 in insurance proceeds. In addition, natural gas purchases have exceeded the budget by 432,000 in eight months. Capital outlay is at 40% of budget. Personnel expenses are at 68% of budget. The town has received 1.4 million of ARPA funds. From this amount, we have used 165,000 to help offset the citizens' electric costs for three months and 63.9 million thousand to help supplement the employer retention payments in 2022. The remaining amount has not been appropriated. Budget revisions will be necessary for fiscal year 2022-23. We have begun the budget process for the '23-'24 fiscal year. That concludes my.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. For that report, has anyone got a question for Deborah on the financial report? Uh, thank you, Deborah, for keeping us up to date, especially on the ARPA funds or anything this year. We probably will, in our budget, discuss again, maybe using those funds to pay that LIPA bill. That way, those funds go to all our citizens who all struggled during COVID and can all benefit from that. And that will lower the cost of our electricity bill on a monthly basis, especially during the summer months when it's so high. So, anyway. Any, no questions of Deborah? Deborah, thank you, I appreciate it. Next thing on item number two on our agenda is board discussion vote on approval of sign applications. Only one we have tonight is Ms. Leslie Ann's Vintage Emporium. And you have that in your packet?
She's here.
She's here? Okay, hey, how's it going? Tell us about your business a little bit while you're here. So if you're on Facebook Live, you got an opportunity. Here you go, cheap advertising.
How are y'all? My name is LeAnn. I am one half of Leslie Ann's. Leslie Parker is at a board meeting at ACCS tonight. But we do have these banner signs, but we are going to get a, either a metal or a wooden sign. We hadn't decided yet. And the reason we haven't gotten it yet is because we are considering taking in that second part of that building. So we didn't want to put it up on one side and then have to move it to the center. So hopefully, we'll know by the summer if we can, if we're going to get that side or not.
Okay, that makes sense for sure. So anyway, do we want, just go ahead and prove her for what she's got there?
It's, I mean, I can hold it out, but it's basically the picture that we have.
Yeah, it's well done. I mean, yeah.
A longer form, but this was done online.
But you're going to do it permanent once you, yeah, that's fine. Can I get a motion to approve that temporary, uh, sign to like decide what they're going to do as far as buildings? Motion made by Alderman Betts?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for opening business in Adalia.
Hey, do I have to say or can I go?
You could. Unless you just want to now. You're welcome to. We certainly encourage you to. Okay. All right, next thing we have is board discussion vote on approval of beer permit for Family Dollar Store in Adalia. Is there any questions on that? They've submitted their application. Do I hear a motion, we accept that for Family Dollar?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith? Do I hear second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Betts? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing we have is presentation of the financial audit for Town of Adalia for fiscal year 2021-22 by Mr. Scott Adams with Silas Simmons. Is he? He's not here. Huh?
I don't think he's here. I didn't, uh, even if he thought he was supposed to come, but I didn't remind him about COVID, so.
Okay, I guess.
I'll give you the COVID stuff.
Next time? Okay, oh. We'll, we'll go on with that, but I will say that, you know, it was a very, very good audit. I mean, uh, this actually makes the second or third year. We didn't have any findings. The findings we did have were, I don't really want findings because a deposit was not made daily from the city court. I don't think is much of a finding, but, uh, as far as any kind of, everybody's doing a good job of being good stewards of the finances of the town. And that includes everybody. So everybody in the offices and everybody, all the staff's been very good. The department heads have all run good departments, being very, uh, being good stewards of the money they spend. Lee would tell you that back in the day when I first got in office, there would be invoices that tall. And now they're probably more like this, you know, people just being more, you know, better, better stewards of the money. So thank y'all very much. All right, let's move on. Next, we have a board discussion vote on a resolution to approve a bid to Gridsource Incorporated LLC for installation of fiber optic Phase 2A. Now, we have Bobby here. Bobby, you want to tell us a little bit about Phase 2A or what that's going, what that entails?
This is paid for by the state through their capital outlay. And it's the south side of Highway 84, the backbone for the south side of Highway 84. And it pretty much parallels, for the most part, Highway 84 back behind those businesses. And that'll give us a backbone to be able to run our distribution off of, also to be able to run our cameras and such as that off of.
Okay, anybody got any questions of Bobby on that? What? All right. I hear a motion, we accept the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's go on to our next thing we have is, thank you, Bobby. Number six is public hearing on resolution authorizing Town of Adalia to enter to a purchase option agreement for industrial inducement purposes. As y'all know, this is the 40-plus or minus acres that Cyra will maintain an optional for their Phase 3 development, which is they have to have in place before they can move forward with their DOE grant and going on with their next phase. Because just like the only time you're dealing with, especially with federal government, if you don't have property, where are you going to do this? They, you know, they're not going to go spend the investment, do the investment to approve it if you don't have the property ready to go to do the, do the work. So this is what that's for. And again, uh, this is for us to enter into that. This is the, uh, the, this is, we're going to enter into a public, public comment period and we're going to have to entertain a motion to do that because this is a purchase option. It was got to have approved and have public hearing. So can I hear a motion, we go into public hearing? Motion made, second by Alderman Smith? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we're in a public hearing now. Has anybody got a comment on the property, uh, option being offered to Cyra? Okay. No questions? All right. Do I hear a motion, we exit public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderwoman Denby? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we've had the public meeting. Now we go to the board discussion and vote. Board discussion vote to approve a resolution authorizing Town of Adalia to enter to a purchase option agreement for industrial inducement purposes. Is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion, we approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts? Second by Alderman Smith? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, thank y'all. Now, we have with us Ms. Jeanne Archer, our tax assessor. She's going to talk to us about our current millage issues for Town of Adalia.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so millages are something that we have to adopt every year. Y'all see me regularly and it's just one of those things that has to be done. And, um, this year, y'all are currently at 3.37. If you stay at your millage rate of 3.37, you will collect somewhere around 124,000, based on last year's figures. Our current figures are nowhere near done yet. So that gives you an idea of what you would collect where you're at. If y'all decided to roll forward, you could actually roll forward to 3.39. It's not very much. You would only collect about $740 more. With that being said, out of that, you know, you got to think about too, that you have to advertise twice in the paper and, um, you've got to put it in there that you're doing this without further voter approval and things like that. So, um, the difference that it takes you to do all the things and the length of time, it would, you would only benefit about $740 a year more by rolling forward. But that's your decision if you want to stay at the 3.37 or roll forward to the 3.39. And, um, just to give you an idea, y'all still have around 2,350 taxpayers here in the city limits of Adalia. And based on a $200,000 house, I just did a little calculation here. Your city taxes only run at the current millage rate, $67.40. So it's really low. And I've looked at it before. And if y'all are not the lowest municipality, you are one of the, one of the lowest municipalities in the state for the millage. So your, your taxpayers should be grateful for that. And with that being said, if, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions of the assessor? Any question? I want to, I want to emphasize what she said, especially to people listening on Facebook, is that she said, if we're not the lowest in the state, at the lower tax-wise, we are amongst the lowest. And what that means is, is that, you know, when people, you know, when you see these other, the other towns, you know, I guarantee you, our, our utility cost is equal to or less than overall than anybody else and our taxes are way lower. You know, I, I promise you, this is a great, wonderful place to live. And it just, because a lot of people fund their police departments or public safety departments out of their sales tax. That's how they do it. And we don't do that. We get, you know, because we get, how much did you say the total will be? 120-something thousand dollars?
About 124.
That's not much money for us to do much with. But anyway, but Jeanne, thank you so much for that report on that. And I think the next thing we will have to do is, based on that report, to go ahead and do the adoption of the millage.
I'm making motion, we adopt the 3.37.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Betts for 3.37. Second by Alderman Probst? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Okay, that was item number 10. Next thing we have on is the board discussion vote on Adalia Police Department personnel. Uh, we have, let's see, Frankie's here with us and Morgan's still full-time. Is that, what?
She's the dispatch.
Dispatcher, okay. Any questions of, of Mr. Carroll? If none, do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman's Betts? Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, next thing we have is board discussion vote to approve renewal of contract for municipal membership with AirMed Care Network, which we have been doing for the last six years, providing emergency air lift services for the Town of Adalia residences. I don't see anybody here with AirMed. Is there any questions on that? We do that each year, I think.
Stay the same. Everything staying the same.
Was the cost the same, 19, I think, huh? It's 19,000, isn't it? Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Denby? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Adalia Louisiana zoning and development code and repeal the currently existing zoning code. To set the table on that, the Planning Commission, which Ms. Cassandra Lynch is the chairman of, they met and they discussed the development of the racetrack that's going to be coming across from Walmart. And I think it's going to be a real nice addition. I've been going into some of those stations outside of Adalia and they're really, really nice. But what the, that area was zoned community commercial or commercial community, which, uh, it, it didn't, or did they get that backwards? It was commercial mixed, which didn't allow for that type of store. And all the properties across the street and up and down the thing are, are zoned community commercial. So this was just changing it. They had made it commercial mixed to accommodate a mixed-use development of whether it's apartment houses, you know, small shops and stores. It couldn't have anything like that in that particular zone. So this just got it to where they can develop that property like everything else up and down Carter Street, basically. Is that in a nutshell, Ms. Cassandra, what?
Yes, in a nutshell.
So if there's any questions on that, this is basically, we're approving the actions of the, of the Planning Commission. I want to thank them for the work they do. It's a, it's a thankless job, I think, that they meet and go over things to keep our town and, and moving forward. And I want to thank, thank you for serving and thank you for your leadership on that, Ms. Lynch. So we have that now, we have that, do we, uh, this is just an introduction only. We don't vote on it tonight. It's just an introduction only. We will vote on it next meeting. Okay, the next one I was, I'm bringing up, I put this on the agenda. We have been, and Ms. Regina Fleming's here and she does a good job being the director of the convention center. But we get bombarded with different nonprofits, school, uh, organizations that want to use the convention center and, you know, and honestly, I think on some of the events that we have, we allow the school board to have some events that's been in place for, since it's been open. We have different groups that if it's, you know, public meetings, whether it's the library, something like that, we, we give consideration of that, open to the public. It's not any kind of restricted, no admission charge and things of that nature, just for community development, community getting together, things of that nature, we take into consideration. But I just want to put the, the discussion out there. We don't have to make a, a decision tonight. But I think we need to look at the, the fact that this was, you know, if we think that we're ever going to have a convention center that turns a profit, we're living in a bizarre world, so to speak. It's never going to, it's like the ballparks over there. You're never going to, what we spend in expense there, you know, we see the benefit from kids and families coming together in our community. And when they leave there, they're going to go to convenience stores, they're going to go to Walmart, they're going to go to restaurants and those things. And the benefit is, is not something that's really tangible you put your hands on, but it's, it's a real benefit. The convention center is the same thing. Uh, you know, when I first ran for office, I was wanting, I thought about a community center. But then I said, why would we go spend money when we've got a community center there? But we've got to come up and I just want to hear some, we don't have to go into deep discussion tonight, but I want y'all to be thinking about what we can do legally to maybe be able to accommodate some of these things. And I'll use, for example, I had, you know, the high school, Adalia High School, wanted to have a football banquet. Well, then the baseball team would have a baseball banquet. And I said, look, is it possible for Adalia to have all their banquets at one time? We could maybe, you know, accommodate that kind of thing because it's for our schools. And, and I feel like that we should bring our community together through our schools because it's really important for our kids. Because outside of the school, that's the only time families get together, that you get to meet your classmates, parents, to see and interact with one another. So I just want us to be thinking about what we can do to make this a better experience, not only for our citizens, but also everybody in the area. And have some limitations on what it is. You know, some things I'm not in favor of, anybody selling tickets for something. Uh, I'm talking about community-sponsored events that are open, free, and somebody's not there to, you know, to make a profit or try to make profit. And then with those things, we just, any thoughts or ideas out there? You want us to just, me and Regina and get a few more people on a, the small committee to investigate what other citizens, uh, cities do, or towns with their municipal, I mean, with their convention center, our community center? Thoughts, comments?
I definitely want to say that, you know, the schools and different things like that, I think it's, that's a, that's a place that they can get together. If they can have a sports banquet, that includes all the sports, that would be, be great making. I think, uh, I think we even had graduation down there one time because of the weather. We need to accommodate them. I, I think that, especially if it's somebody that's, that's in our town, that is nonprofit or something like that, they have it. I think that's part of the benefit of being inside the, the city limits. That's the reason why we built it, is for them to use. I don't know what the current schedule and price is right now. I know we used to, we, we've got one, but I don't remember what it, what it is. But I think we do need to take a look at.
Well, what we, there's a lot of things to consider. Number one, you have, when it's, you do have a function that requires security, requires insurance. That, you know, if somebody has a function that requires insurance. And, you know, when you say a nonprofit, there's nonprofits that want to have events there, but they sell tickets to.
Right, right.
And, you know, that's, you know, that's what, that's what I just want to see if anybody has any ideas on that, what we could do to make it easier for the people. Like when the schools call me up and they want to have a banquet or something similar to that, you know, we, I don't have to just turn them down because, well, we can't do that. That's a donation, you know? So we want to look and see what we can do to, to make the experience of our convention center better, but not work Regina and them to death with having, you know, five people coming for meetings all day and not just because it's there. Uh, so that's, that's some of the things we want to talk about, to make her life easier as well, to make better decisions on serving our community with the convention center because it was paid for with public funds. And we want to serve, help, help our community if they need to. Uh, you know, people having a wedding there or something, I can see us having a, you know, a charging for that because they're not going to go somewhere else and have a facility that nice without paying for it.
Right.
You know, productions like that, you know, things like where it's bought, you know, the Mardi Gras balls, the, uh, the other things like that, we need to charge for. You know, that's something that they charge monies for regardless of who it is. And we've landed, landed some of those in the last few years. And they've been very nice events at our, at our facility. But it doesn't seem like I've got a whole lot of people just, y'all okay with us just looking at that and coming back to y'all with a recommendation on what other cities and towns do?
I was going to ask on that, you were talking about local nonprofits, like what are, what would be, what would be some, Regina, that's using it, that are local nonprofits that sell tickets? You see what I'm saying? You're talking about selling tickets, make it a profit, but they're nonprofit. I guess they're, I guess they're not making a profit to that. I don't know what you're, I know what you're talking about. Probably one of them is a women's club.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, they, it's, and the miss, and see, that's one, like, that's, they're civic organization, they're nonprofit. The Miss Adalia Pageant is one of the largest events held at that convention center that's very well-run, very, very, very nice event.
Right.
And, you know, and, uh, but it's, 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 you know, there's a way to look at it. That's, they do that to help fund that event, but they, it's open to the public. It's open to, there's not a closed deal where they're just selling members only. It's open to anybody who wants to attend, anybody wants to put their child into a beauty con. There's, there's so many parameters out there, I just, you know, I, I don't want to get caught and not make a right decision on somebody that wants to use it and us not make it, you know, not serve our community by letting them use it. And, because it is tough with all the different types of people that's come up. You know, then you start getting people coming from out of town that's going to get a resident to say, oh, go show up for this and we're going to get this and we go and get it for free. See what I'm saying? I mean, you might have, it's, there's a lot of parameters we got, we got to work on that, that make that. Jeanne?
Just an example, Mr. Probst, would be the chamber.
Yeah, the chamber.
We are nonprofit, but we, we do sell tickets to come to the annual gala.
Right, right.
Um, but it's to cover your meal.
Right.
And we do have a drawdown, you know, but it's nonprofit. But, you know, and I don't know where else could hold that many people that come to things like that. Just something to.
I mean, yeah, I brought the chamber, but they, y'all use it.
There, there's so many. I mean, each month, they use even the janitor room for their lunch, which I think that's what it should be for. I mean, we can, uh, it's, it's important. I think it brings, brings the community together and in place that they can come together is very nice. And, uh, which, you know. Anyway, we, we'll work on that. I don't want, we can talk all night about the different things that come up. But Ms. Regina was worried about this portion of the meeting tonight. She's kind of nervous about it. You still nervous, Regina? You good? Okay, all right.
Which one of us working you the worst, Regina?
I'd like to say one thing.
Which one of the nonprofits is working you the worst? I guess which one is the?
Owl.
Owl.
You know, talking, just talking about the different events and there's been some good events in there, but I tell you, it's not like the Brightest Stars Ball. I mean, if you ever got a chance to go to that.
That's, if you hadn't been to one of those, you need to go. It'd make you leave there thankful to be who, you're really blessed. Okay, there's no decision. We'll, we'll work on that, Regina. We'll get with some others. So, okay, next thing we're going to do, I, I put this on there. Uh, Mr. Rowland and, and the beautification committee have said this many times. It's board discussion on littering within the Town of Adalia. That is a, that is a pet peeve of mine. I can't tell you, when I see somebody going down the highway or anywhere and they just throw out their Popeye's bag or their, and it's just, it's, I, I want to encourage and I hope that Ronnie is patrolling that riverfront, people eating crawfish and just throwing their heads right there all on the, on the ground. And we really need to start enforcing, and Frank, I'm not saying they don't, but we need to start, you know, watching. If they see somebody doing anything in parking lots or anywhere, uh, I hope we start writing tickets. I would like to see us issue tickets, may issue a warning for somebody, but if they get a second offense or something, we need, we need to keep our town clean. Our men work so hard on keeping our town clean. I'm so proud of the work they do. Our community is clean, but it's a everyday job, I promise you, of keeping it clean. And I just want to thank our guys that keep it that way, but I think we need to give them some help. some help. And as a citizen, I promise you, one time I was walking in Walmart, and there was somebody parked in a handicap parking spot that wasn't handicapped, number one, that got me, and the first thing they did, they threw out a big old Sonic bag full of milkshake and all the, and I was turned, I walked, I turned around, I went back, I said, "I can't let this go," I went back, I picked it up, I said, "I am not," I said, "I'm gonna throw this away for, where are you from?" From Faraday, I said, "You can do this in Faraday, but we don't do this here, I'm gonna throw this away for you, but don't do this no more, and by the way, you parked in another handicap parking spot." But, but anyway, I think enough of us need to, you know, if we see something like that, don't get in trouble, don't be confrontational, but remind them, "Hey, look, we want to keep our community clean," so. Anyway, having said that, I just would, Frankie, if you'll just take that, Ronnie, you're here, if you'll just, you know, kind of watch and patrol that riverfront, you're doing a great job. Okay, the board discussion and vote on installing early warning sirens in a town of Vadae, I've had a lot of requests for this, to discuss it, there's pros and cons to this, we have been pushing Code Red on all of our utility bills, for you to call and sign up with Code Red, it works, I promise you, it will wake you up in the middle of the night, whether you have a dial-in phone, whether you have a cell phone, whatever it might be, it will alert you of any kind of weather warning or otherwise. Bobby has gotten me estimates, right now, I think the last estimate we got, Bobby, was what, a hundred and forty-eight thousand? Or one sixty-eight?
Uh, we had the last one down like one twenty-four.
Okay, the first ones came in, and there was two or three locations to put sirens, and what they would do is they would warn you in the event of a hurricane, I mean, a tornado warning, so to speak. You know, I can walk outside, if it's, I'm a weather watcher, if it's kind of anything, any kind of watcher, something, I stay outside and look, and if there's ever a warning, Natchez, I can hear Natchez's sirens going off all the way over here. You can hear them over where you are? Okay. So, but then there's, you know, if you don't have anything, you don't woke up the whole town, there's gonna be people mad at you, so what? Well, I want to see what the council's thought is, do they want to pursue this further, and maybe put it in the budget next year to get the warning sirens, and how they would be operated and worked, and who would actually trigger them? I think it's done by, National Weather Service is the one who would, who would, you know, it wouldn't be us, you know, we won't be standing by a light switch to turn it on.
We can have, we can have the ability to trigger the alarm ourselves, but the way that it's normally set up is basically just National Weather Service, and I think you can also have like the E O, your emergency preparedness and B B and stuff like that.
And there's, you know, it's not just weather, too, I mean, you know, we have chlorine gas at our water plant, and they've had some outbreaks once or twice before, and they've had, had an evacuation one time years ago. You know, so if you have a leak in chlorine gas, you can't breathe that, you die. So, you know, if we had something like that, a breach of some chlorine gas, have an accident where that's, you know, that happens, you would have a warning sign to get some people aware, to move around and say, "Hey, what's going on, what's the warning sign for?" So, what's the Alderman's thoughts on that, is that an investment y'all want to look at doing, or?
I like the idea.
Yeah.
I know Code Red, I had, I was on, I was visiting my dad two weeks ago up there, and their Code Red system hit my cell phone about 2:00 a.m. in the morning, that was, that was that storm that was coming across, going to Mississippi, so, yeah, it gives you a joke, but I was glad that it was, it was there, and I think the sirens will probably, you know, give us a joke for a little while, but we'll be glad if something happens, we can be prepared for it.
Well, and I bring it up because with us being in discussion of our budget, wouldn't it be a good time to put it in there, if that's what you want. What about from the public, do y'all like the idea, public, publicly?
Mayor, I have one in my front yard, and it goes off, and I've never had any thing come through there, and it goes off, and it goes off, and it goes off.
Well, that's, that was my concern, you're gonna be, you're gonna be making people mad if it goes off, you wake them all up.
If our house is closest for five hundred to a thousand yards around, you're gonna get complaints, unless something comes through and blows our house away, then they're glad. But if nothing happens, you will get a complaint.
Okay, all right, we got, we'll, we'll do more work on that and see what, you know, what'd be the, I'm gonna talk to Mayor Gibson and see what his response has been over Natchez with the ones they have, and if they take very much complaint, people complaining about them, so. All right, thank you all much. Last thing on our agenda, I just want to give some project update on a lot of things, we got our new ambulance in, and it's very, very nice, I looked at it, I've been out of town, I just kind of didn't want to go, went and looked at it, our citizens have a very, very first-class, nice ambulance, if they need it, heaven forbid they need it, but if they do need it, it's gonna, it's got all the bells and whistles, it's very nice, so. Doug, y'all, anything you want to say about it?
Would like to thank the board and the citizens of Vadae for allowing us to get that particular truck, which is not much more expensive than the old one, but it is one of the nicest around here, and our guys are very proud of that, they, they, they're very proud of their Ford. It'll better help us to serve the people in all the weather conditions, it has, it's safer for our medics because of the new safety systems in it, it's safer for our patients, it's just a very nice truck, it's the same truck that East Baton Rouge EMS, or Baton Rouge EMS, put in there for the same carriage, but it is a super-nice truck. We're gonna hopefully get it in service within the next week or so, when we can get it certified there at the state, we'll, we'll put out some, through the mayor's office, some literature and some pictures and some things, so that the citizens can see the equipment that they purchased, and they would, they would be very proud. It's got some features in it that benefit us and our patients, it's got decontamination lights in the ventilation system, which kills viruses and bacteria with UV lights, we do disinfect it after every run, but the air is something that's hard to disinfect, so as it goes through the circuit, circulation system in the truck, it's decontaminated, so it kills viruses, so we don't reinfect somebody or infect our next patient, so it has some things that our old truck didn't have, because when we got it, it wasn't available, but it is a whole lot safer unit for, again, our medics and our patients, so us getting our patients to the hospital safely is our primary goal. But again, my guys are very proud of it, they've gotten a little taller, and we just want to thank everybody for allowing us to purchase that truck, it took a long time to get it, but it was worth the wait.
Yeah, we just hope, just hope nobody has to use it.
Yeah.
That's what our prayers are.
If we can pull it out of the station, it'll be fine with me. But again, thank y'all, and the reason the chief is not here yet, doctor, he's getting a little older, he's gotta go out and down.
Tell the truth, the percher biting him. All right, thank you, Doug.
Thank y'all.
Okay, I'm gonna do a quick project update for you, the water plant improvements are moving forward, they're, we're getting close on our funding, the governor's office is gonna put it in his budget, which will speed up the process of having those monies moved from P5 to P1, and fully fund the water plant, so that's good news, and then they were gonna add another seven or eight million dollars on that global state capital outlay projects that we have for utility upgrades, so I want to thank the governor for saying he's gonna put that on his, on his budget, so that's, that's a big help right there, so. The Vadae Port Phase Two is moving forward, the wetland determination hasn't been received yet, they're waiting on Geotech to finish up their borings and things of that nature, however, we did proceed to move forward with the seepage analysis and soil analysis, so that survey has been done, so they're gonna be moving forward Phase Two, which is development of the slackwater portion of the port, which is gonna be big for Sire as they move forward with their project going into Phase Three. Our roads, everything's been, it's ready to open for bids, those bids should be opened, we will be completely overlaying Peach all the way up to the new overlay where we did it last time, Myrtle Street will be overlaid, Alabama Street from Riverside all the way to Oak Street will be overlaid, and the old part of Am from Concordia Avenue toward Carter Street will be, that will be completely overrated, overlaid. We're going to go ahead and use some of that reclaim to move over, the town owns property behind the junior high, that the Concord Youth Development Group, we're gonna, there's a walking trail back there, we're gonna probably use that reclaim, because we need room to put it, so that would be a logical spot to put it, and we'll smooth it out and make a nice walking trail back behind it. I walk back there on a regular basis, really a nice, you know, I just hope the bears don't show up, they've been having a bear show up back there, so. But anyway, that's what's going on with the roads, and we're going to be analyzing the other roads, that's gonna need some overlay, and we're identifying those now, as we, as we go about town, the next ones to put on the project list. The Vadae Slough Project, everything's been completed on that, all the funding's there, all we're waiting on right now is to make sure there's any final permitting from the Corps, because you're within fifteen hundred feet of the levee, the Corps has some issues, some permits, and that's, we're waiting on them for some final permitting on that, and we'll be moving forward on that, it's ready to go, other than the final permits that need, that we need from them. All the surveying's been completed, the funding apparatuses are in place to fund it, and that's all we're waiting on. The Vadae wastewater improvements, we've had two separate funding agencies, we've applied through FEMA and also the Water Sector Program, Gosef is reviewing some of those applications, and we won't know from FEMA until June whether or not we're gonna get those through one of the two of them, as far as improvements on our sewage. We, our Vadae Fiber Optic, Bobby's talked about already, they're gonna be opening bids, or they, no, they've already opened the bids, and those have been awarded moving forward with those. We're still waiting on a cost estimate on raising our water wells on the riverfront, this is mandated by, by the state to raise that water well up above the flood stage, one hundred-year flood stage level, and we're just waiting on a timeframe, Louisiana Department of Health on that. The wastewater treatment aeration system, we're, same thing, we got applications in waiting on any kind of acknowledgement of that. We put up, we finished, completed erosion control and fencing around the port, y'all realize, know we had some vandalism out there, insurance did pay, but we put up a fence around it to keep people out, and we've talked about the road project. The drainage improvements that you're seeing, I want to apologize to the citizens for Murray Drive over there by the high school, when they got into that project, they went to digging in to that, and they, there was a twelve-inch water main that was right in line with the culverts, and they had to order a new type of surrounding, and Cornell's done a good job staying on top of this, they were gonna go in and maybe want us to move that line, which would have been a very, very big undertaking, that we didn't want to put the citizens in that area at risk of being out of water for a long time, and so if we, they've come up with a way to go around them, those, the covert will, I mean, the line will be in the line of the covert, but it will not hurt the flow or capacity of that covert at all, so thank you Cornell for standing on top of that, and, but that's why, that's what the holdup is, they're waiting on the type thing, apparatus that they can put in place that would enclose that and not hurt it, so that's what, that's correct, right? All right. The other thing I've got is, I have Ms. Pye Wilson, I think Lorraine's going, and Hannah, they're going tomorrow to the LCDBG to look at, or going back with the blighted program, we're gonna have to look at, we're investigating, you know, Ms. Cheryl Walker's our new city judge, and we were told by the LMA, she couldn't serve as the court administrator of the blighted property, so we're gonna have to discuss that, they're gonna check on that, and also funds available through the LCDBG to start back up on our blighted properties, we have some, they've done a great job over the last few years of getting property, the blighted properties down, we're gonna pick that back up and get very aggressive back on that, so thank them for the work that we've got, we've got these three ladies, Pye Wilson, Hannah Junkin', and Ms. Lorraine Scott, working on a lot of different grants, and working on a lot of different things, far as it's gonna be good for our citizens as we move forward. I want to say Ronnie Wedgworth, I want to thank, he got hurt in line of duty here a couple of weeks ago, he was helping work a accident up here by the Home Hardware, and with sirens and ambulances and fire trucks everywhere, somebody, he got in his vehicle, and they rear-ended him, and he was in, he was hurt pretty, he shook up pretty bad, but we want to thank him for being strong, he came back to work the next Wednesday, so.
Yesterday was my first day back after a week.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got bruises and contusions and places I've never thought I'd have.
They smacked him pretty good.
About forty, twenty-fourty, forty-five miles an hour, and a dead, and a dead stop.
You know, most people go through their rubberneck and they slow down, want to see what's going on, but.
And I had just got back in the car over fifty quid, you know, open up the road, the westbound lane, he's right up there, dead, to the corner, and just as I sat back down in my car, waiting that chintzy, my seatbelt on, that's when he got, and it just, it made a mess out of the car.
Well, we're glad you're okay, and that's the main thing, the vehicle's gonna be replaced.
Our ambulance services and the fire department, when we're talking about that a while ago, and I don't need to carry it any longer, but those guys know what's going on out there, our, you know, the fire department ambulance, the AMR, and Trinity Medical Center, they were very thorough, as far as cash cans and everything, and I can feel more, there was nothing but something I can't look at.
Good deal, we're glad, we're glad you're all right.
Thank you, everybody, thank you guys, fire department, everybody, but they're on top with it.
Yeah, I agree, we have the best of the best. Okay, on April the twenty-third, that's a Sunday, starting at twelve or twelve-thirty, we're gonna have the Boat Christian for American Cruise Lines, the Splendor is a new ship, they're still in, they're in the process of finishing up the completion of it, and it will be sailing from New Orleans to Vadae for the christening of it, it's gonna be an event that we're gonna have, we're gonna have food vendors there, we're going to, it's gonna be a very nice event, we have the Liberty Bells, which is onboard entertainment from American Cruise Lines, our godmother of the ship is our Congresswoman Julia Letlow, so she's, it's gonna be our godmother of it, and the town will be the host, the godtown of it, so it's really a nice event to be honored and recognized to be that. Last, last year, y'all know Natchez got their ship, the Symphony, I think theirs was, and so we've got our ship now, so they will be over here on our riverfront, you know, they got their dock completed, we're doing some improvements over there, you'll see, we've got some painting going on, we're gonna be starting painting on our riverfront, they're cleaning it all now, sandblasting it, doing all things to make it really nice, and then we're gonna probably bid out the rest of it, from the gateway on down to the end of the, we're gonna get more bids on painting, but I got, this was a small project that we were able to get by, didn't have to do a whole lot of bids on to get those done, so, that's exciting.
What is the time of?
The time? What time? It's gonna be twelve or twelve-thirty, I think, I gotta look at it, see, I just got in, but they had meetings today on it, trying to finalize everything, so, it's twelve, okay, twelve o'clock. And again, there will be food vendors there, if you want to come on straight from church and get something to eat, have some little entertainment, and then we'll have the christening, expecting Lieutenant Governor Nun Gesser to be there, and, you know, some other dignitaries, and so would like to invite, invite the public to come out, have a good time, be a good community day, and if it's raining, we'll go to the convention center, but it's gonna be a fun day, so, anyway. All right, the other thing. Alright, the other thing, uh, I always wanted to just say, as far as projects go, you know, we talked about, one of the things that we talked about in the hydro meetings as far as the, one of the biggest overrounding things that we needed was the Nichols, maybe the Nichols Drive filling in that ditch in Nichols Drive and the Viking Street, uh, ditch, the estimates on those two projects, this is informational only. Is a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the Nichols Drive ditch and for the Viking Street ditch, one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Again, those are estimates and that's just for information. Last thing I've got and I'm excited about is I went today after my meeting in LIPA. I had a meeting scheduled at the University of Lafayette, Louisiana Lafayette with the, and I gotta read this because it's long. The Energy Efficient Sustainable Energy Center at, at the University of Lafayette. And I met with three of their, uh, main people as far as energy renewals and, and stuff. And they are having to put in a, a deadline for concept papers for getting some of the funding for, it's a part of the US Department of Energy Office of Clean Energy Demonstrations and Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Energy Improvement in Rural and Remote Areas. And they have to put a concept paper in. And it's open to the communities that apply for it, they're under ten thousand. And, uh, they serve a rural area and they must be domestic entities. And the University of Lafayette is, their concept town that they're turning in this application for is the Town of Vidalia. And what this would mean is they're going to, it's, uh, it, it basically, it's overview on it is, it can deliver marriageable benefits to energy customers in rural and remote areas by funding replicable energy projects that lower energy costs, improve energy access and resilience and reduce environmental harm and demonstrate new and rural and remote energy system models using climate resilient technologies, business structures that promote economic resilience, new financing mechanisms and/or new community engagement best practices and to build clean energy knowledge, capacity and self-reliance in rural America. That, in a nutshell, what they're looking at for a concept, why they picked Vidalia is, number one, the hydro was a big part of that. Number two was we are a town that could have a match if it's needed, need be, which I don't think we are, would have to have the match. But they were looking at having solar farms that the town, because that's what this, this is actually, this, uh, this is a research center for solar panels where I was at today. And they were looking at a solar field for, uh, for Vidalia. And they would, uh, use some of that solar power to liquefy hydrogen, which is something that can be stored for power and sent anywhere by truck or train or whatever, all over the country or world, for that matter. So it's exciting that they used us for the concept town, it's not that they're gonna have to get approved for it and then whoever wants to apply for it, no, we're, we're the town that's in that, that application for that concept. So it's pretty exciting and talking to these guys today, uh, again, this is ground floor, I just found all this out today. I thought I was going just to get a, a tour of a solar field and I found out it's a lot more, a lot, a lot of good stuff. And, uh, this was, uh, set up by Tom Outlaw, he worked for the Department of Energy out of New Orleans, he and I have become friends. And he had been in selling Vidalia, uh, own this project to these people. And, uh, and he was also, Tom was instrumental in me helping Sire get that two hundred and twenty million dollar grant from the Department of Energy as well. So I'm very hopeful and, and that, that this is gonna be something that's great for our town, so. Anyway, that's all I've got and I'm gonna ask to hear a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Alderman Gardner, here's second.
Second.
Second by Alderman D M B, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you everybody.